Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeda. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the October 1st, 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our Chaplain Commissioner Gwen Myers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all. Having the Father, I come to you today thanking you for all that you have done for Hillsborough County Government. As we begin a new fiscal year, Father, I thank you for the budget that we pass, that you allow us to achieve everything that is in our budget. As our citizens come in for service, we'll be able to offer them the service based on our budget. Father, I ask for a special blessing for all our first responders. Bless this meeting, bless our administration, and bless this board in your holy name I pray.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. This morning, we have some very special awards to be presented, and the first ones will be presented by Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to lead this award ceremony on behalf of the board. Today, we are honoring exceptional Hillsborough County youth for their shining examples of how young people can lead the charge to eliminate bullying in our community. I would first like to invite Dr. Oliver Massey, Chair of the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee, to join me at the podium and tell us more about the Anti-Bullying Recognition Awards. Good morning.
Hey, Commissioner Myers. Well, first let me thank the Board of County Commissioners for supporting the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee in efforts to address bullying in Hillsborough County. I know you've all heard about bullying. Roughly 20% of kids in schools experience bullying while they're there. What you may not know is that over 50% of children and youth experience cyberbullying. This is something that's relatively new, but it's very pernicious, it's very common, and it's something that takes the entire community to address. It takes the Board of County Commissioners, it takes concerned parents, it takes concerned teachers and educators, and it also takes our youth. And that's why we're here today, to recognize some of those youth who have shown by example the things that can be done to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Massey. This year, we are recognizing a 10th grade student and two 8th grade students as our 2025 Anti-Bullying Award winners. The Anti-Bullying Recognition Award goes to a young person or a group of young people up to the age of 19 to highlight their efforts to eliminate bullying. This year's Anti-Bullying Recognition Award individual winner is Angelina Sykes. She was nominated by her mother, Mrs. Shiloh Sykes. Would Angelina and her parents please join us at the podium? All right, come on up. Welcome. Angelina is a 15-year-old and is in the 10th grade at Tampa Preparatorial School. After witnessing the last harm of cyberbullying among her peers, Angelina was inspired to address how deeply technology impacts today's youth. She decided to tackle cyberbullying at her school by creating a club called Encourage, Not Discourage. She and other students met by weekly to discuss cyberbullying statistics and foster a community of like-minded students committed to spreading awareness. To reach as many students as possible, Angelina also set up a table before the school to promote the club and other students the opportunity to sign a pledge stating, "I pledge to discourage cyberbullying at Tampa Prep." She received two pages worth of signatures and provided key changes to solidify the students' pledges. Additionally, she created a YouTube video featuring statistics about cyberbullying, which was accessible through a QR code in the hallways. This is a very effective way to reach her peers. Angelina's future goal includes striving for straight A's this year, continuing to work on her rowing skills, and preparing for college. She wants to pursue a career in filmmaking through drawing, acting, or writing books. Today, in recognizing this exceptional young woman, we cannot be prouder of Angelina for being a role model by defending others from bullying. We are also proud of her family and the staff at Tampa Preparatorial School who supports her vision as she... Hold on. Sorry about that. As she leads by example and compassion, it is an honor to present her with the 2025 Annual Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. Congratulations, Angelina. Congratulations, young lady. Would you like to say a few words?
First of all, I would like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I would also like to thank Commissioner Gwen Myers, the board, and Eva Dyer for taking the time to prepare the ceremony. I will now like to speak about Girl Scouts and how it's impacted my life. I've been in Girl Scouts since first grade, and while the cookies are very delicious and the badges are awesome, I'm glad Girl Scouts gives me opportunities to impact my county and Tampa. My goal for the Silver Award in Girl Scouts is for it to reach more people in the community so the fight of bullying becomes stronger and so it can benefit more people each day. Lastly, I would like to end with thanking the Hillsborough County for presenting me this award, and I hope everybody comes more aware about bullying online from this message. Thank you guys for your time.
Here is the award. Also, I'd like to just say to the parents, thank you for instilling the value of an education in your daughter's life because at school she has made a difference in creating a cyberbullying... Yeah, go ahead and clap. And it takes all of that today, so I'm assuming she's a part of the family, but that's what she's supposed to do, be a cheerleader for the young people. Okay. You all remain up here with us. I'm going to also ask this year's Anti-Bullying Recognition Award team winners, also Alfredo Martell and Leandro Griffin, to join us. Unfortunately, Leandra... Okay, come on up. Come on up. Come on this side. Is unable to attend today, but Alfredo is here representing the team. So would Alfredo and his parents please join us, you're already here. Alfredo was nominated by Hillsborough County Sheriff Deputy Dana Fucus, who was assigned to the Town and Country Boys and Girls Club at the time of the nomination while attending the Boys and Girls Club. Alfredo participated in the Think Big for the Kids program, both of them did. The program requires them to create a hypothetical technology application and... and then present to a group of peers. These two amazing students went above and beyond by creating an anti-bullying application concept to anonymously report bullying issues. This application also provides educational resources for the children who commit acts of bullying so that they may be better understand the impacts of their behavior. In addition, they wanted this app to be free so that all young people can easily access these resources. Today, we recognize these young people as outstanding examples of leadership in the community, and we are extremely proud of their accomplishments. Alfredo is now 13 years old and is in the 8th grade at Wells Middle School. Leandro's in the 8th grade at Wells Middle School as well. Alfredo's future goals are to be a musician or composer. It is a pleasure to present Alfredo with this year's Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. Alfredo, congratulations to you and Leandro for your service. We will make sure that Leandro receive her award. Let's show some love to both of these. Both of these in the presence of him. Alfredo, would you like to say a few words with him? Don't be shy. Come on up, young man. It's okay.
I would like to thank you all for being here today. It was a great honor to be here. I didn't think I would be up here. I turned it in because I didn't know I entered this, but I'm glad I did. I would like to thank my family for helping me get to this point. I would also like to thank my principal for being here. And that's it. Thank you.
It tells us that the train up the syllabus, so... Come on up, Angelina. Come on up, both. We're going to stand in front of you and we want to not make it difficult for you. Now, it is time for Mr. Hewitt to please come forward with Wealth Management to present... Each year, he comes and presents an annual bullying award, and we're happy to have you. But again, to these young people, you are our future leaders. Continue to invest in what you're doing because you're going somewhere in life. Come on up, Mr. Hewitt.
Good morning, everyone. It's an honor to be here again to help present this very special anti-bullying award. My name's Elia Ewing. I'm a private wealth advisor and founding partner with Windward Wealth Management, which is a private wealth advisory practice of Ameriprise Financial. I want to begin by thanking the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners and the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee for their commitment, continuing commitment now to this cause. Their work behind the scenes makes today possible. I'm just grateful to get to be a part of it. Each year, I'm inspired by the stories that we hear, stories of courage, compassion, action. And this year, one theme stands out: Taking Action. Not just talking about change, but doing something about it. Bullying isn't new. Adolescent behavior might shift from generation to generation, but the challenge of bullying has remained consistent. What's different now is how today's youth are choosing to respond. They're using the tools available to them, primarily technology, not as a distraction, but as a platform for awareness, connection, and change. That brings me to a quote that I came across recently from Steve Jobs. "Technology is nothing. What's important is that you have faith in people, they're basically good and smart, and if you give them the tools, they'll do wonderful things with them." That could not be more fitting today. Our honorees this year have taken the very tools that often fuel drama and distraction and turned them into instruments of empathy and empowerment. In my own work, I help people use financial tools to pursue meaningful goals, whether it's planning for retirement, sending kids to college, or navigating life's unexpected turns. The tools are only as powerful as the purpose behind them. And that's what today's about: Purpose. These students have shown us that when you combine purpose with action and give people the right tools, you can make a real difference. So congratulations to this year's honorees. You've not only taken action, you've inspired other people to do the same. Thank you for being a part of the solution.
Go ahead and present it. Want to present it now? Okay. Thanks, everyone, for taking time, and you can see how impact our young people have made a difference in our community because they're going to continue their success, and we want to wish them the well in your future endeavor. And then we'll go to the back and take a picture. I'll go to the back here with the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers, and congratulations again to our award winners. Our next presentation will be given by Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would Program Coordinator Salma Heider-Mota and Early Childhood Specialist Josie Gracia, both from Redlands Christian Migrant Association, please join me at the podium? Good morning and welcome to you both. I am excited to recognize an amazing organization that has done a great deal for children in farming communities. The Redlands Christian Migrant Association is instrumental in providing quality childcare and education from the crib to high school and beyond. Its core values are composed of four simple yet profound words: Quality, Opportunity, Respect, and Compassion. After 60 years, RCMA is recognized as a national role model in preparing rural low-income children for leadership in increasingly challenging and complex world. It is my honor to present this proclamation to Ms. Heider-Mota, declaring today as RCMA Day. You can come stand right here and hold it. It reads, "Whereas the Redlands Christian Migrant Association, also known as RCMA, was founded on October 1st, 1965, in response to the urgent need for childcare among farmworker families in Florida's Redlands farming community. And whereas RCMA has developed a mission to serve Florida's most vulnerable children and families, particularly those of farm, working, and rural communities. Whereas over the past 60 years, RCMA has grown into Florida's largest nonprofit provider of early childhood education and one of the state's most respected charter school operators, now serving more than 4,300 students and families across 18 counties. And whereas RCMA is committed to creating brighter futures for children and families in low-income rural communities through high-quality education, wraparound support services, and advocacy that uplifts the voices of agricultural workers and underserved populations. And whereas RCMA has earned national recognition for its excellence in education innovative approach to addressing barriers to learning such as poverty, housing insecurity, and language access. And whereas the impact of RCMA is deeply felt in Hillsborough County, where its local centers and programs support working parents, prepare children for success in school and life, and build stronger communities through education and empowerment. And October 1st, 2025 marks the 60th anniversary of RCMA's founding, a milestone that celebrates the tireless work of its staff, family, and supporters who have made RCMA a beacon of hope and opportunity for generations. Now therefore be it proclaimed that this Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare October 1st, 2025 as RCMA Day in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents to join in honoring the legacy and continued work of RCMA in advancing equality, education, and opportunity for Florida's children and families executed this first day of October, 2025." Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Good morning, County Commissioners and everybody attending. My name is Salma Heider-Mota, and I recently retired from RCMA after working for 49 years. Throughout my tenure, I have seen tremendous growth that has benefited and improved the lives of tens of thousands of children. It is with great pleasure and honor to address you today. We are immensely grateful for the startup for RCMA, followed by your steadfast support for 60 years. In 1975, with the help of Sister Maureen Smith, the county building and amphitheater was offered to us, and hence we were able to open our first childcare center, serving 75 children, infants, toddlers, and preschoolers. During those formative years, we received state funding for a migrant program serving 150 preschoolers, when St. Anne's Church allowed us to use their space. As years passed by, the need increased. With different funding sources, we were operating 14 sites in Ruskin, Wy Mama, and one in Manatee. We served 900-plus children. Additionally, the community at large, namely the United Way, Agricultural Growers, Interfaith Council, Community Foundation, Simmons Foundation, Hope Foundation, Hillsborough Community College, local churches, businesses, and Hillsborough County Licensing Office, were all responsible for this excellence in programming. We couldn't have done without them. RCMA Infant Center was the very first childcare program in Hillsborough County to receive the national accreditation. Since then, all our programs are nationally accredited. RCMA opened their doors not only to the children and their families, but also for our staff. We encouraged and motivated them to attain higher education and thus provide them with the tools to achieve this, as the other lady gentleman just said. With enormous pride, I share several of our monolingual staff worked tirelessly, along with their regular jobs, to receive their Bachelor of Arts degree and are now fluent in two languages. The results of all the cumulative efforts and the strong backing of Hillsborough County, every penny spent is seen in our children, who are now productive members of the Tampa Bay community, serving as a doctor, IT professionals, nurses, teachers, pharmacists. Once again, please accept our heartfelt gratitude for your kindness and your loyal continued support.
That was amazing. We're going to take a few photos if you can join us. You would like to come up and join us for photos?
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. We have one item that has been removed from consent for highlighting, or accommodation, or announcement. It will remain on consent. It's Item 829 by Commissioner Hagan to approve the updated performance evaluation templates for the county administrator, county attorney, and county internal auditor. There is no financial impact. We have one item for time certain. It is 9:45. Item G2 is to receive a report on county-owned land in downtown Tampa. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Camera motion for the changes.
Move, approval. Second.
Motion, Commissioner Wostel, second, Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote and changes to the agenda.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Okay, the board will go into the public comment portion. The board welcomes comments from the citizens about any issue or concern, or your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, at the same time, as requested that you... Comments are not directed personally at the board or staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which requests to speak have been received. When I call your name, please come to the microphone, state your name, and each person will be given three minutes. First three speakers this morning are Denise Herndon, followed by Marciel Rivera and Thomas Good morning, Ms. Herndon.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. I had watched a little bit of the Doge Committee concerning the tourism. I don't know how much the county commissioners are listening on this, but some of the things I agreed with, they are assuming that each line item that the county commissioners are approving to give away to tourism, they're aware of. I don't know if that's true or not. I've been bullied by an adult for a long time. It's just not our kids that are bullies. To me, domestic violence, bullying, sexual assault, it's all about control because the bullier is actually insecure and they're actually jealous of the person. That's my take on 66 and a half years of my life in seeing bullying going on. There's a lot of adults bullying. Our country was founded by immigrants, but legal immigrants. And what's going on in our country right now with setting on fire... MLK was not about violence. He was peaceful for segregation. And our country is growing a wrong way. Socialism is not what our country is about. It's about capitalism. And socialism, there's a legal way and an illegal way to come into our country, and we're funding a lot of illegal immigrants. You county commissioners have approved for hospitals for Medicaid. A lot of illegal immigrants are getting Medicaid. They're taking our money back over to Mexico. Or this one man that I took care of at Brandon Hospital, he was on a life support machine the whole time he was there, and I think it was over a year, and he had like eight kids in Mexico he had been sending his money to, and Mexico wouldn't accept him because of his care. We could not get him off life support. There has to be something done. There's a legal way and illegal way. And first meeting I came to this room was with Shirley and Wayne Hammond concerning the rezoning of the property now that's in Rotary Camp. It was a rad property. And when we get back, Wayne says, "Why can't you ever get along with your neighbors?" And I go, "She gets along with me." We get out of the car and he turns around, he goes, "It's a matter of time." That was in November 2013, and I realized in 2014 that she had been stalking me along with my son. So kids aren't the only ones bullying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Next three speakers, Marciel Rivera, followed by Thomas Covert. Next three speakers, Marciel Rivera, followed by Thomas Covert, and Amida Kalipara. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tony Rivera. I am the president of the Plantation, the Plantation Homewood Association in Carrollwood. I came last year, and I basically addressed the commissioners about one of the concerns that actually that was taking place in our community. Plantation Homestead is one of the oldest association and communities for 30, close to 50 years around, but, and I'm a little bit nervous. I'm sorry if you tell I'm a little bit nervous, but last time I was pumped up. But I came in last year with one of my colleagues, also Frank, to address some of the concerns that we were experiencing from the roads. The roads in Plantation were not done for over 38 years, and it was dismantled. It was bad. Sows were real bad. I mean, completely, it could be dismantled. And since I came in to the association as president, I took that, that, you know, this is my community, and we want to make it look beautiful all across also, but there was a need for that. So last year, I came and I addressed it with Commissioner Hagan. And I came, I'm coming back as an appreciation for my community, to give our commissioners and Mr. Ken Hagan a sincerely thank you for what you have done in our community in such a short time. Our roads have gotten done completely. The boulevard has got done. I mean, it's a pride, it's a sense of pride when you come into our community. It's beautiful coming in. People are so appreciative now, you know, what we have done. And for that, I want to thank personally Mr. Ken Hagan for what you have done for our community. I know there's going to be a phase two of this work. And sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, I'm here to represent our residents, to, as a token of appreciation, I got you a little small something to say thank you so much for what you have done for our community. I mean, you don't know what the difference you have made in our community. And that goes for all of us. You know, we're here to make a difference in all our communities, and to make our city beautiful, safe for all of us as well, too. And I think, once again, you know, I cannot thank you enough. And I know Frank also, he also wanted to address it also, the guy that came with me also, that he also wanted to thank you personally also. He wasn't able to attend, but I came here personally to, once again, Mr. Hagan, thank you once again for what you have done for our community. And I'd like to also commend all the commission also to also helping us as well, too, to put a safety on our community. Now, there's still more work to be done. I know there's going to be a phase two coming up, and I'll leave it to Mr. Hagan and his staff. I also want to thank Patrick Mori, the guy, the engineer, but I mean, he done an outstanding job. He's also Gloria. I mean, they have been fabulous people to work with. And guys, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and our resident for Plantation, so much for what you have done for the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir, for your kind comments. A lot of folks come down here, but very few come down and actually thank us. So on behalf of the board, we very much appreciate your kind comments.
Thank you, sir. What can I leave this with?
Yeah, Gloria's back there, and I'll walk back there in a second.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you again, sir. Thomas Covert, followed by Amida Kalipara, which is virtual, and then Anthony Daniel.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Tom Covert. The U.S. Supreme Court ruled in 2024 that the First Amendment prohibits government officials from wielding their power selectively to punish or suppress speech, including through private intermediaries. A commissioner proposed Agenda Item F5 on 17 September 2025 to rescind all remaining current and future funding that has been allocated for Masjid An-Nasr because of something a board member had said about the murder of Charlie Kirk. Nasr immediately removed the board member over the comments, which they viewed as offensive because it could be viewed as representing the mosque. The B O C C does not have the authority to take any punitive action over free speech. This would have been equal to a mob boss saying, nice mosque you got here, shame if nothing happened to it, or a Klansman from Six Mile Creek, where I grew up, demanding the mosque be punished. An apology made to Masjid An-Nasr would be the right thing to do. Unfortunately, in the current political environment, I know that is not going to happen. Speech that is not protected is language that incites violence. A good example is an individual inciting a crowd of 1,600-plus rioters to attack the Capitol to overturn a fair and free election. Our democracy is in trouble. Republicans want to establish a permanent one-party minority rule. Oligarchs want to establish a clautocracy where the poor, old, and sick will be left to fend for themselves until they die of sickness and extreme poverty. The president wants to crown himself as king. If he does, he will disband Congress because they have the power of impeachment, which he would consider to be a threat, that he will not tolerate. Billionaires will bend the knee, or they will suffer the same fate as the oligarchs across Putin in Russia, falling out of a window. I am a Vietnam Air Vet. I took an oath to the Constitution, not a man. I will always stand by that. The American people are known as the sleeping giant. That giant is stirring, and when it awakens, it will roar. This democracy will not end, and it will take care of business. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Is there Amida Kalipara, virtual?
Hello?
Yes.
Please begin speaking now.
Hello. Hello. Hi, my name is Amida Kalipara. I am a high school student in 11th grade at Jarry South High School, and I'm here in front of the Board of County Commissioners to talk about a school project that I've done and to receive guidance and instructions on if there's next steps that I could take to be able to push forward a mandate with the county. I, as in my school project, I conducted research for over 70 adults in Florida, and about 13% to 15% of my respondents had skin cancer. And I did an entire project for my health class about the, like, the effect of the lack of sunscreen that people use in Florida, and the effects of skin cancer across our state. And 100% of our respondents who have had skin cancer participated in frequent sun exposure through their adolescence. And after learning this in my health class, I started a project where I go to middle schools, and I teach middle school students about the importance of staying safe from UV radiation and protecting ourselves from the sun. And like, these results have, from like this entire project and this community, like, awareness, like initiative, I've learned about the importance of protecting our skin and protecting our health in the teacher. And UV induced diseases like skin cancer build up over time, and the damage starts from the tanning beds that we use as teenagers, and to the lack of sunscreen when going out to the mall. And these consequences of these, like, improper habits, they don't appear as teens, they don't appear in my age, but in people who are 40 and 50 years old. And so I'm in front of the Board of County Commissioners today to urge the Education Board to implement a curriculum mandate, which would require that all public middle school students receive instruction on the following topics, including the consequences of overexposure to the sun, a brief overview of skin cancer, and the importance of staying safe from the sun, the wear and sunscreen, and taking protective measures. I've already, like, raised the awareness in my community with over, by presenting lessons to over 125 students across middle schools in the new Tampa area. But now I'm here in front of the county board to request curriculum changes for middle schoolers, mandating that sun safety be taught in PE classes or health classes. I've seen firsthand the impact of, like, not taking precautions on one's skin and one's health, firsthand, and I've seen my family suffer from the effects of skin cancer. And I would really like to urge the board to give me guidance on how to pass a curriculum mandate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for all of your hard work, and we'll make sure someone contacts you to get the information that you've worked so hard on. So thank you again. Last speaker this morning, Anthony Daniel. Good morning, sir.
Huru. Huru means freedom in Swahili, and we as African people should always be thinking about our freedom. I want to say, any African person, any black person standing and pledging allegiance to the flag is a fool, and any black person go down and vote and participate in colonial politics is a bigger fool. I also want to say, in recognition of Yom Kippur that's coming up, Day of Atonement, it's a good day for the Zionists to atone for the sins that they're committing all over this world, not just in Palestine, all over this world, that they've been committing. And it's a good day for atonement for the hundreds of years that people all over this world, poor and working-class people all over this world, have been suffering under colonialism and capitalism. It's a shame. And right here in this county, we see the degree of participation. It's absolutely positively none. And I'm talking about the degree of participation for African people, because African people are terrified. They're terrified of the government. They're terrified of the police. They're terrified of white people in general. The Ku Klux Klan have elevated itself to a level of judges and administrators and politicians and everything else. And black people are terrified. And what's up with these stupid police officers riding around with their lights on? Oh, they're not stupid cops. It's called a police state. Stupid sheriff officers riding around all over the county with their lights on and nothing going on. They showing you, intimidating regular citizens, can't do nothing about it. They think it's a good idea, proactive policing. It's called a police state. That's what it's called. Nothing more, nothing less. And we as African people, whatsoever percentage of population we represent in this county, we don't get nothing for, and nothing in our return. Nothing. Absolutely positively nothing. The representation sucks. I'm also here today to talk about Allied Security Services over at 700 Twig Street. This is a letter, I'm no snitch, but this is a letter that I wrote to their supervisors in reference to their treatment of the people going in Twig Street. On numerous occasions, I've been called a stupid MF, get your BA out of the building, that's black ass out of the building, you're a stupid MF, on numerous occasions, by Cruz and Pace, a Spanish gentleman and a black gentleman over there in Twig Street. They're a danger to the public, a danger to the public. Thank you very much.
Okay, that closes up public comment. Before we vote on the consent, I did pull one item just for highlighting, 829. And board members, as we all know, Christine is in the drop, and will be retiring in December. And that'll be here before you know it, so we need to address that position. When I saw the updated performance evaluation on the agenda, I just thought it'd be a good opportunity to just let the board know that I'm going to have on our next agenda an item just to address our options moving forward with the county attorney. So I just wanted to let board members know. So with that, can we have a motion to approve consent?
Move approval.
Second. Motion Commissioner Winstoll, second Commissioner Miller, please record your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Bonnie, first item?
The first item is a 9:45 time certain. I believe you can waive your rules to hear that item two minutes early.
All right, committee.
So moved. Second.
Motion Commissioner Winstoll, second Commissioner Myers to waive our rules. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
This item is item G2. It is to receive a report on county-owned land in downtown Tampa, and John Mueller will take us through this report. And then we have several representatives who are here as well, if you have any questions.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Mueller, Director of Facilities Management, Real Estate Services. I just want to note here today in the boardroom for today's presentation, our Chief Judge Sabella, our state attorney, Ms. Suzy Lopez, and our public defender, Ms. Lisa McLean, are all here in the room. Today's requested report was straightforward. What land does the county own in the immediate area of the surrounding county center, basically from Sparkman War, where Benchmark International Arena is, up to the north to Cast Street, just north of our court's complex buildings? You could see the outline on your cover slide there. So on your, on your second slide there, we've listed 19 properties totaling 28.61 acres. While we have listed an estimated value, I must note this value is not intended to supply a fire sale price. It's to give you a perspective of our presence in the market area. We do not include Benchmark Arena in this estimated value. As for some of the highlights on this, I'd note we have five, over, just over five acres of surface properties, that being either a parking lot or a lot with a single-story building on it. As an approximation, our property's support, I believe somewhere in the neighborhood, I can't give you an exact number, but just say 2,900 plus or minus staff or related or contract workforce, whether they're county constitutional, Department of Health, charter agencies, et cetera. So we took it just a little bit step further to give you a perspective here. On this slide, we've overlaid 14.78 acres of other public agency property in the same area, the same region. The school board, of course, is our neighbor, along with Rampello School. DOH is a joint owner of land of their split building. They have a kind of a split building with a breezeway with the county. And the city, of course, with Fort Brooke, we have some partnership down there for the History Center. I just note, I have to note this, we are fortunate to have Tampa Fire Rescue Headquarters in Station One next to us, knock on wood, because they've helped us quickly a number of times. So I want to recognize their proximity to our facilities. So this next slide may surprise some or not surprise some at all. The Expressway requires a fair amount of land, about 30.6 acres in this study area. But on your last slide there, we'll note that there is actually about four acres that we understand the Expressway is considering for some sort of mixed-use mobility hubs, like, basically something that could provide parking, transit bus stops, but also retail or office uses combined. So like most folks downtown, they're looking, can we leverage the property, go vertical, and still accomplish what we're trying to do? So with that, I wanted to keep it brief, just to give you that overview, and we're here for any questions or comments.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Mueller, for that report. I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make, and then I have a few motions, two motions, actually, to put before the board. The first comment is that it's just important to start at the outset by saying that, under Revision 7 to Article 5 of the State of Florida Constitution, court facilities are the responsibility of the counties. This is definitely something that is our responsibility to deal with. And then the second point is that we have had a demonstrated need for some time for a new criminal courthouse. And one of the reasons that so many of the stakeholders are here today is because this need has existed for as long as I can remember. It's been a top priority of at least the last four chief judges. And, you know, thankfully, previous boards had the foresight to purchase property downtown. So we have, as you saw from the report, a huge inventory of land around this area that's available to us in order to move our entire, really, criminal justice infrastructure into the next century. I would, I would say, 25 years into the next century, it's definitely time to start planning this process. So with that in mind, I'd like to make two motions. I'm going to tell you both of them first, and then move each of them individually. The first is to authorize staff, our staff, to participate in a courts-led stakeholder committee, whose purposes include revising and/or updating the 2020 Courts Master Plan scope and budget to reflect current forecasted needs and building strategies, and also to make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners for options that we might have in terms of how to move forward. The second motion would be separately to authorize our staff to investigate additional non-ad valorem funding sources. I want to make that very clear. I want to make that very clear, non-ad valorem funding sources, to include but not be limited to such things as public-private partnerships, debt instruments, and also federal and state funding, which could supplement the future $155 million that's already proposed in the CIT to fund an updated Courts Master Plan. So the first motion is to authorize us to work with the stakeholder committee, which is going to come back to us with recommendations. And then the second is for our staff to come up with funding options for us should we decide to move forward on this project.
Second.
Okay, so we'll take it individually. First motion by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Winstall, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to support your motions. I think it's a fantastic endeavor to go under. I just would like to make sure that when staff is looking at them, that they consider the options in East County as well. We have lots of great land, and to be able to provide those resources in East County would be very beneficial. And there's a tremendous amount of growth happening there as well.
Thank you. That's an excellent point, and it absolutely should include that. I also would just mention, the Clerk's Office, I'm sure, has come around to all of you to talk about their needs for a records facility. And they have some ideas in terms of where they'd want that outside of the downtown core. I would also think that it would be helpful for this committee to look at that project as well, just because that's also, it's really under the same umbrella. Thank you.
Commissioner Winstall?
Yeah, I'm obviously going to support. I just, anything we can do, that initial price tag was very surprising to me. That being said, we are a very litigious society, and we have a large population. But the third of a billion was pretty stunning to me, so thank you.
Okay, so again, motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Winstall. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, and the second motion, Commissioner Cohen?
Yes, and the second motion relates to authorizing our staff to investigate different funding options for this project. And I listed out earlier what some of those might be, but not to put any limitations on what they might consider.
Second.
Okay, motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Appreciate your leadership. Thanks, John. Bonnie?
Thank you. We can move to the regular agenda. The first item is item B1. This is regarding the award and allocation of the Historic Preservation Challenge Grant Program funds. And Ron Barton will present this item. He does have a modification from that which was in your agenda package.
Good morning, Ron.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you. Item B1 is related to the Historic Preservation Challenge Grant Program. So that's the content of this motion. And as the administrator just mentioned, there are several different actions that we're taking in this motion. The first is to approve the awards that were recommended by the Evaluation Committee, with one exception. I had a very productive conversation with Commissioner Winstall about one of the applicants. And I think it could deserve more due diligence associated with it. So we want to remove Turbo Dog Holdings LLC from the list. And so instead of 16 that you'll be approving, it'll be 15. And instead of the $1,399.36 that's in the motion, it'll be revised to $1,290,937. So in essence, we're taking one award recommendation out for the time being, as well as the dollar amount. So that's, you'll be approving the 15 entities in the package. The second part of this motion is actually three resolutions. They're required because of the capital funding for outside agency policy. Any award over $100,000 requires that to be done. It's a higher-level analysis by management and budget. And it also requires separate resolutions. So you'll see three of those that are in this package. And then finally, you authorize the county administrator or designee to execute grant agreements for these 15. And we'll be using the form agreement that's been attached to this package as well. I'm available for any questions, and I look forward to your consideration.
Thanks, Ron. Commissioner Winstall?
Thanks. One of the things that stuck out to me about the one item that was pulled is that this organization is barely 18 months old, created on sunbeds. And it almost appears like they bought a dilapidated old church, and they had pre-plans to use the property tax of Hillsborough County residents to flip the building, avoid their own capital injections into it, and converting it into a for-profit commercial, which brought up a lot of other questions to me, which is what I couldn't find. When this was created back in 2011, was there a cap or an annual amount that we set aside for this program? I tried to find that, but it didn't appear that there was a hard number. We're at 1.42 million, I think, is where we're at.
From memory, I think it's a 1.5 million budgeted item.
And I would say that, you probably didn't, this is another million and a half pre-allocated for something that is 14 years old. And the policies are so fragmented, it's impossible to find all of these little deaths by a thousand cuts, as I call. So we have to do something to bring all of these. I've asked for this before, something to clearly demonstrate pre-budgeted, commissioner-created items. And this is another one of those. And maybe I need to bring this policy back, and we need to, because the policy itself, if you read it, does not say $1,500,000 a year. It doesn't say that in there. It just says that if they're doing a certain amount, that they have to meet certain, and that there's a ratio of one to one. But I've read exhaustively all of our policies, and I would have had no idea that it was 1.5 million pre-allocated from reading our own policies. So something's got to be done. I don't know what that answer is. But I appreciate you removing this one item, and hopefully we can address this. Because this is countywide property taxes, and it's more of those things that we can look at reducing potentially to roll over to all of our many needs. We had a resident here. You know, I felt bad for the resident coming here to think of so profusely because they've basically been beat down to needing to beg us to fix their sidewalks. That's not how it should be. I felt bad that he even had to come here to do it. I don't feel grateful that we fixed his sidewalk. I feel ashamed that we're 16 years behind. And these are all avenues that we can look at progressing towards catching up those serious backlogs that this board has been left with. Thank you.
Commissioner Bowles?
I'd just like to make a comment related to what you just said, Commissioner Winstall, in that I have recently engaged with staff and legal to look at our board policies. I was kind of taken aback when we had the Clerk's Office do the audit, and they audited 90 of them and 30 that they recommended that we get rid of. We have over 250 policies there. I'm heading up with staff to try to get a sort of a committee together that can include one or all of us on there, along with legal, to kind of go through that. Along with that as well, to make it easier, because I don't know if you know how difficult it is to try to rifle through all those PDFs that you can't really search in. Staff is also looking to change that over to, I'm just going to equate to like a Unicode, where we can type in a search item and we can go in and find those. So that's all, and at no cost. That's kind of built into, no additional cost, I should say, to the board or to the county. So we're looking to do that. I think that will help in our endeavors to clean up and get rid of some of this nonsense that's in there.
Good points. Commissioner Myers?
I'm moved to approve item B1 with the necessary changes that has been presented.
Okay, we got a motion, Commissioner Myers, or second?
Second. I think the necessary changes are the removal, right? Okay.
Motion Commissioner Cohen. Don't see anyone else in the queue. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Ron. Next item?
Thank you. The next item is item B2. This is a budget amendment relating to the refunding of the county's capital improvement non-ad valorem revenue bond series 2025. Kevin Bricky will present this item.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Management and Budget. B2 is asking for approval of an FY26 budget amendment to allocate proceeds from the successful issuance and sale of the county's capital improvement non-ad valorem revenue refunding bond series 2025 for the purpose of paying the issuance costs associated with the 2025 bonds and refunding a portion of the 2015 bonds, which were outstanding in an amount of $56 million. The county, through this refunding, was able to achieve debt service savings of nearly $3.3 million in net present value as a result of the sale. And that's 11, nearly 11.1% savings on those refunded bonds. And with that, thank you. I'm here for questions.
All right. Good item. Camera motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on B2.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item F1. Chair Hagan, this is your item regarding an expended fiscal year 25 nonprofit amount.
This is consistent with an item we had to do for Commissioner Myers, I think, last meeting, and Commissioner Cameron Cepeda at a previous meeting. So we can just have a motion to carry it over.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Winstall. Please accord your vote on F1.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you. The next item is a staff report. This is item G1. This is to receive a report regarding South County growth impacts on infrastructure and services. And Josh Bellotti will take us through this item.
Good morning, Josh.
Good morning, commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations. As Bonnie mentioned, this staff report addresses growth in South Hillsborough County and originated with a request by Commissioner Miller. The initial concern was focused on flooding. And so we'll focus first, or start off first, with a quick review of the stormwater regulations for new development. And there's much more detail on this included in your backup material. We'll highlight the specific case study of flooding along West Lake Drive. And then finally, very briefly touch on the impacts of South County growth, specifically on Public Works, Infrastructure, and Services. So we discussed this at the July Budget Workshop. But to briefly recap, Black and Beach, in their assessment, found the county to have robust regulations in place when it comes to stormwater and floodplain management. The base requirement is for the post-development peak discharge from a site to not exceed the pre-development discharge for the 25-year, 24-hour rainfall event. Hillsborough County takes those further and has overall higher standards that also include compensatory floodplain storage, more stringent requirements for peak and volume-sensitive basins, and 72-hour recovery of stormwater ponds. Also at the July Workshop, we discussed how Hillsborough County's stormwater regulations were first adopted in 1982. And we showed how just over half of the development across the unincorporated county took place prior to that adoption, and so was not subject to those regulations. When we zoom in specifically on South County, we see that percentage is a little bit less, which is expected, because much of the growth in that part of the county has taken place more recently. However, it's still approximately 41% that predates the adoption of stormwater regulations. So the events that initially sparked this request took place back in late August of 2024, which was prior to Hurricanes Helene and Milton. There were back-to-back high-intensity rainfall events in the Wyomama area. And you can see the totals on the slide here, which fell in a very short timeframe. And it caused flooding along portions of West Lake Drive, and also raised concerns about the new developments in the surrounding area, which included subdivisions as well as a new public school. So this prompted investigation by county staff into the cause of the flooding, including meeting with the residents, field inspections of the county's stormwater infrastructure, as well as the ongoing construction activities, and an analysis of historical aerial imagery and topographic and elevation data. The investigation found that stormwater culverts along West Lake Drive had been obstructed by silt that was attributed to the ongoing construction activities. The impacts were temporary in nature, and remedial actions were taken to remove the silt and perform regrading of the drainage conveyances, and also to secure the construction sites to ensure no further impacts from their activities. Now, following this case study, we were asked to provide information on how the overall growth that has been occurring in South County may have an impact on the infrastructure that Public Works maintains and our ability to provide ongoing operations and maintenance services. So one way to quantify the amount of growth in Public Works' infrastructure is to look at the contributed assets that the county accepts from new development. We can use the measure of overall lane miles of roads contributed as a gauge, because all of those roads have the supporting infrastructure that Public Works is also responsible for, including sidewalks, signage and signals, curb and gutter, drainage ditches, stormwater inlets and pipes. And so looking at just the last 10 years, 447 lane miles of roadway has been contributed in total. And 400 of those miles, or 90%, have been in South County. So additional infrastructure has been added. But in general, the staffing level and budgets for operations and maintenance has remained relatively flat. Some year-to-year adjustments have been made, but not to accommodate the additional infrastructure. And we note that going forward, based on the continued growth forecasted, there will be more to come. This additional growth brings new assets and infrastructure to maintain, as well as additional population with demands for services. Public Works' maintenance units are split into three geographic service areas around the county. And since 2019, we have received 19% more work orders in the South Service Area than in the other two. So what are we doing about this now, and what can we do strategically for the future? One thing that we have been doing is, over the last several years, we have been increasing our contracted maintenance services to supplement our in-house staff and equipment. So we contract for regular right-of-way mowing, for tree trimming, for stormwater ditch and canal maintenance, among others. So we want to continue to do that going forward while maintaining a balance between the in-house and contracted services, because our in-house capabilities are what we rely on when we need to respond to emergencies. Next, we're going to need to look at the expectations for level of service. For example, on the stormwater side, the frequency of mowing and ditch maintenance, and really determine what resources are necessary in order to achieve that on an ongoing basis. The stormwater rate study, which we plan to present to you in advance of the rate setting for next year's stormwater assessment, will be a step in that process. And then lastly, as we look to the future, we want to explore what kinds of long-term strategic planning we can begin engaging in now in light of the South County growth, so that we can best position ourselves for the future. And so with that, I'll thank you for your time and offer to answer any questions.
Thank you, Josh, for the presentation. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Chair. I want to begin by thanking Mr. Bellotti and Inspire for their work and review, keeping myself and my staff up to date. This was my first commissioner item, and I didn't really know what to expect or all the different layers that would shape it and following it. During my first year as commissioner, one of the most frequent concerns I've heard from residents is simple but powerful. Development is flooding us out. We hear it almost on a daily basis. Residents feel that these new developments aren't managing runoff properly, and that it is worsening flooding across the county. This was my community focus before the three major hurricanes struck our area and remains one today. I've come to understand that part of the challenge comes from the stormwater standards changing over time. Before 1982, the regulations on development didn't exist. Properties built under those conditions were never required to account for their own runoff. And when the new development is built next to these older neighborhoods, it can look like new development is the cause. However, the previous homes and communities likely don't have adequate stormwater management. Previously, this wasn't as noticeable as the surrounding areas were empty and able to absorb the water. The culvert and pipe capacities have increased, causing additional chokeholds in stormwater systems, imposing challenges with the department's already lengthy CRRP, the Culvert Repair and Replacement Program. This doesn't make the frustrations on the residents any less real, but it helps us as a board target more solutions more effectively. In addition to the comparisons in the older-built parcels and newer-built parcels, this review process has also highlighted the challenges the Public Works Department's facing. As noted, it's the 19% higher workload in these two units in the South. We need to ensure that the infrastructure and services are funded and staffed to keep pace with growth. This means prioritizing the culvert and stormwater upgrades already flagged and exploring sustainable funding options to address both legacy problems and the new pressure. sustainable funding options to address both legacy problems and the new pressures. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that the board direct the County Administrator and Public Works Department to evaluate these options for addressing the unique growth challenges in South County, including the additional burdens placed on the South County Service Unit, and return with any recommendations, costs, and potential next steps for board consideration.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Miller. Second, Commissioner Wostel. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you. Josh, I just want to do a quick thought exercise with you that I did with Bonnie during my briefing. One of the things that I've heard several times before, and I heard recently by someone I respect, is that the allegation is that for every dollar of new revenue that an approved home generates, it creates $1.20 of impact on the county. And I don't know if that ratio is correct or not, but there's the assumption that there's not enough revenue created by a new home to pay for the services and demand that it creates. I'm not asking you to answer that. What's never answered, what's never answered is the other side of that coin, which is that when we say no aggressively to development in Hillsborough County, what has happened is they've moved outside of our control, and I've said this before, and they have surrounded us on 54, and they are now surrounding us on the Manatee County line. And I don't know, I mean, the Chair can correct me, but I don't remember a major new development in the Northwest area in the past 20 to 25 years. There's just not much land left for it there. But the traffic worsens, and 30% of the traffic on veterans that I drive every single day, multiple times a day, is from Pasco County. And I believe that I'm being charitable by saying 30%. There's just nowhere else for it to come from. It's all coming from that 54 line. So the one allegation is that we're at a 20-cent deficit by creating a home, right? The dollar to $1.20. But what I do know for a fact is that for all of those homes in Pasco, the county starts at $0 of revenue. But there is an impact, and no one ever asks what that deficit is of us having them not in our county, but we're absolutely paying for them to use our services in Hillsborough County. And so I guess that's why I'm very challenged with that. I have historically been very unapologetically pro-property rights, and I'm not going to change that, because I don't support the government. I definitely don't support the person that I beat to be here, to be the chooser of winner and losers of what somebody gets to do with their property, and I also don't want to be that person. I don't want to create undue burdens for the residents of Hillsborough County, but the answer is, well, just make them go somewhere else. That does not remove us from having impacts, because the next victim will probably be Polk, and then Polk will find a way from there to go east to west into us. And so I just don't know what that balance is of financially, is if it's that we're not charging impact fees? I've been very clear. I'm pro-property rights, but I believe that developers need to pay 100% of the burden that they create when they build a home. So if it really is that we're still not somewhere charging them enough, I would like to know, including stormwater management. If it's that fire rescue on these new impacts? Because, look, we're being superseded left and right at the state. Live Local, SB 180, who knows what's next. The Agricultural Enclave, which fell last year, is likely going to come back and be approved this year. So at some point, we're going to have to accept it's going to come. It's likely going to come here, because we're closest to the major urban core, and I want to make sure that if it's going to come here, that if we are not charging enough, I want to know that, including for stormwater management. Or if it's just that there's no way to properly fund it, because the other side of that is that they're going to say, well, that the cost of the homes in Hillsborough County are now too expensive if you increase those to those rates. So, but do you agree, though, that from, you guys have tried to engineer and account for the needs of Hillsborough County, but we have said no, and they have surrounded us statistically. Do you agree that we have impacts from people probably coming southbound from Pasco County and northbound from Manatee County? I mean, it's undeniable, in my opinion.
I would agree that that's certainly the case, that there are impacts. I don't know if we've been able to quantify it or do the analysis yet on that, but I think certainly there are some level of impacts, for sure.
And I guess that's the question, is that, fine, if you want to say that we're at 20-cent deficit for them being built here per home, but we are also at a deficit for them not being built here. And I think that that's just a very, growth management is the impossible task of the Commission, and I just think that saying no, 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 no is also not the right answer. So, thank you very much.
Before I call on Commissioner Cohen, I want to jump in here just for a second, because Commissioner Wostel brings up excellent points. It's an unfortunate dilemma that we've struggled with for years, and I will tell you, in some respects, we have qualified it in that probably 15, 16 years ago, was fighting the same battle in Pasco County, on Bruce B. Downs specifically. And at the time, our engineers stated that 60% of the traffic on Bruce B. Downs emanated from Pasco County. And I went as far as to suggest potentially putting up a toll booth. And I got some of the nicest, most supportive emails from New Tampa residents in Hillsborough County, and some of the most vitriolic, disturbing emails from those in Pasco County. But that's a fact, and I imagine in South County, it's probably the same or worse. So, yeah, it's one we've struggled with, and any solutions that we can possibly come up with, I would certainly support. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. And I couldn't agree more wholeheartedly with everything everyone has said. I want to add to it, though. It's not just the traffic. The water also comes from Pasco County. The water flows south, and you talk about the stress on our canals and our ditches and our outfalls. That's not all water that's produced in Hillsborough County either. So I think this is a great time to look at this. I mean, it's the first day of the fiscal year. We have some time to really delve deep, and if we have to make adjustments, we should make them.
Okay, excellent points. Can we get a motion by Commissioner Miller? Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Wostel, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, Josh. Bonnie?
All we have left for future discussion items.
Any other items for board members? Commissioner Bowles?
Sometimes, I think you're in my, you've got a cup up against the wall there, Commissioner Wostel.
What's that?
You have a cup up against the wall sometimes.
No, but we do joke that if we tried.
Yeah, you can't, I know we can't. I'm just being funny about that. How apropos, I wanted to wait to this point, but to go right off the heels of what you're saying, you know, impact fees, and I talked to this with the Administrator about one particular thing, but impact fees ensure that we, growth pays for growth, right? I think we would all agree with that, that it's a one-time cost. I mean, if we look at what the Tallahassee's coming down and saying that we're taxed forever on our, we're paying for something that we buy with the advalorem taxes, and they're wanting to reduce that or eliminate it. We have to look at when those aren't collected properly, or the burden shifts onto advalorem taxes, because we're not doing that. I mean, this forces what? We have to look at existing homeowners and businesses to subsidize those developments that are coming in, and the changes in transportation and all. And of course, this also underscores the problems that we have with advalorem taxes. So to that point, and that we do collect several impact fees for mobility, school, which we don't have too many, you know, any control necessarily over that, park, fire, and there are utilities there. I'd like to have staff prepare and return, and I'll provide this to the Clerk's Office, I have a copy for you. Prepare and return a comprehensive report on the current status of all impact fee studies, including those but not limited to mobility, fire, rescue, schools, and parks. The report should identify the most recent date of review and adjustment for each fee, the implications of Senate Bill 1080 and our ability to increase our fee in phase-in-the adjustments. If you guys haven't paid any attention, even though I know Brandon sent something out on Monday about all the different bills that impacted us, Senate Bill 1080 handcuffs us from doing what we need to do, because as of January 1st, if we can't get 7-0 on raising impact fees, they don't happen. That's the reality of what Tallahassee is doing to us. So our inability or our reluctance to do something before now is now basically handcuffing us from possibly doing something in the future. And then number three, come back with recommended options or strategies to ensure compliance with state law, and maintaining the principle that new growth needs to pay its proportionate share of infrastructure and those service costs.
Bonnie, you got all that? Okay.
I got a paper for you.
You got a paper for you. All right, Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When is the workshop on indigent?
That'll be January 14.
January, yes.
14, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to ask for one additional thing on there, and I've been very clear about indigent. I fully support and am personally perfectly okay with paying for a true indigent. I've been very honest. My own brother is an indigent who actually meets the definition of what that tax was meant for. However, in the past, I have asked staffs very clearly, does the indigent, which is a local tax, a local tax, not federal Medicaid requirements, does the indigent healthcare program supply healthcare to illegal aliens? I was immediately responded to as no, Commissioner. It does not. I have since confirmed that it absolutely provides healthcare to illegal aliens in Hillsborough County. So I would like during that workshop, a full accounting and reach out to the benefactors of the indigent healthcare program, which is the medical, the hospital industry, for a full accounting of how much annually the indigent healthcare, which is a local tax that was not voted on by the taxpayers of Hillsborough County, how much it pays for the healthcare of illegal aliens in Hillsborough County. I would like that in the workshop when we get there. Thank you very much.
Okay. Don't see anyone else in the queue, so we're adjourned.